Good morning and welcome to our May 7, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting. And I'd like to start out with the invocation from Commissioner Ed Carmody.
Please bow your heads. Almighty God, we thank you for allowing us to come together this day in order to work together for the good of our Wayne County. Help us to consider everyone's point of view, whether we agree or disagree. I pray our decisions are the correct ones because the outcomes must be for the betterment of all and not a select few. Bless all other groups that have our citizens' welfare as a priority. Our Department of Social Services, our Health Department, our school system, our Sheriff's Department, our military EMS, our hospitals, our doctors, and especially bless the parents of our children. In all these things, I ask in the name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Can I get a motion for the approval minutes, April 16, 2019?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved, Commissioner Payton, any discussion? All in favor, please signify, raise your right hand. Thank you. Discussion, just of the agenda, Mr. Honeycutt, anything?
No adjustments this time, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Any board member has any suggestions?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of an agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Doherty to approve the agenda, any discussion? All in favor, please signify, raise your right hand. Thank you. Our special presentations, Mr. Honeycutt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And we're very honored to read a resolution honoring the life of Dorothy Lee Foreman Cotton. She is a former resident of Goldsboro in Wayne County. And with board's permission, I'll be glad to read this. Whereas Dr. Dorothy Lee Foreman Cotton, leader, civil rights activist, friend, sister, and daughter of Goldsboro, North Carolina, grew up at 917 North Greenleaf Street and whereas high school teachers recognized Dr. Cotton's talents and academic abilities when she graduated from Dillard High School in 1948. And Dr. Cotton was a charismatic woman who overcame adversity and showed resilience throughout her life. Her commitment to the national civil rights movement serves as a testimony of hope, achievement, sacrifice, and courage. And whereas the first in her family to go to college, Dr. Cotton graduated from Virginia State University in 1957, earning degrees in English and Library Science. In 1960, she earned a master's degree in speech therapy from Boston State University. And whereas Dr. Cotton began her work in civil rights with the Petersburg Improvement Association in 1959. And whereas Dr. Cotton was known for assisting youth in nonviolent civil rights practices. And whereas Dr. Cotton believes strongly in the power of education, equality, and inclusion that she served alongside Reverend Y.T. Walker to desegregate public libraries in Petersburg, Virginia. And whereas Dr. Cotton served with the Southern Christian Leadership Conference and managed the Citizen Education Program to empower youth for political participation, voter registration, and nonviolent protests. And whereas Dr. Cotton worked tirelessly for the civil rights movement at the highest level in the United States. As a member of the Southern Christian Leadership, she, along with other members accompanying Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. to Norway to receive the 1964 Nobel Peace Prize. And whereas Dorothy Lee Foreman received an honorary degree of law from Ithaca College in 2011 for her efforts in civil rights and the Southern Christian Leadership. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the Wayne County Board of Commissioners that we recognize and respectfully honors the memory of Dr. Dorothy Lee Foreman Cotton for the contributions that she made during the civil rights movement and declare May 12, 2019 as Dorothy Cotton Day in Wayne County, North Carolina, adopted this, the 7th day of May, 2019. And if there's anybody here representing... We'll make sure that...
Thank you, Marty.
Marty?
Well, I was gonna say shortly, I've enjoyed learning about Dr. Cotton.
Marty, give us your microphone.
Okay, all right. I was just gonna say that I have enjoyed learning about Dr. Cotton. I think her, definitely, her contributions are pretty significant to the highest level of the civil rights. But, I mean, she grew up in Goldsboro, came to visit here, had a lot of family here, and I always thought of Goldsboro as home. The May 12th is, there's a, on that, is a Sunday, and it's at Greenleaf Church, Disciples of Christ Church. There's a memorial service honoring her. She created an institute when she, before she had passed away. And it's based in Ithaca where she had died. And there's a group of singers, it's called the Jubilee, the, or the Cotton Jubilee Singers. And they'll be at a, that's the program of May 12th at the church. So I think that's why, that's where that date came from.
Okay. Thank you, Marty.
Need a motion?
To have a motion to adopt a resolution. Motion to adopt a resolution, but Commissioner Bayton, any discussion? If not, I'll, in favor, please signify, raise your right hand. Thank you. Thanks.
Next, we do have a motion, proclamation for EMS Week. And I believe Brian Smith will be reading that.
Good morning, Commissioners, how are y'all today?
Good morning.
I'd like to thank y'all for the EMS and Transport Division for your support and honoring the employees of both divisions this morning. Okay, proclamation for Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the emergency medical service system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of emergency medical service teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners, in recognition of this event, does hereby proclaim the week of May 9 through that week, 26th it says, but it's that week, 2019, Emergency Medical Services Week.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we accept this part resolution.
Okay, motion, Commissioner Acox, accept resolution of EMS Week, any discussion? Any discussion, all in favor, please signify, raise your right hand. Thank you. Next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And again, I want to thank Nanette and Brian and all of our staff for that and EMS for the work they do. We've got a lot of good things that are coming up this week, special events at the Maxwell Center. So we really want to thank y'all and appreciate the work that you do. With that being said, we also have a proclamation for the Williams Family Reunion Day. Whereas descendants of Haywood Williams, Hattie Nelson, and Ina White have deep roots in Wayne and Lenore Counties. And whereas Haywood Williams was born and raised near La Grange, North Carolina. And whereas the Williams Family Reunion brought approximately 120 descendants together in 2017. And whereas in 2019, the Williams Family Reunion will be held on the 400th anniversary of the first African slave being brought ashore near Jamestown, Virginia. And whereas the Williams Family Reunion has chosen to bring the event back home to Wayne County for 2019. And whereas the descendants of Haywood Williams, Hattie Nelson, and Ina White will gather in Wayne County, North Carolina, July 19 through the 21st, 2019. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Wayne County Board of Commissioners, hereby proclaims July 20, 2019 as Williams Family Reunion Day in Wayne County and welcomes Williams families to our community to celebrate the past and embrace the future. So if there's anybody from the family?
May you say, do I have a motion to approve this proclamation? Commissioner Doherty, motions to approve proclamation for the Williams Family Reunion Day, any discussion? Be noticed, guys, y'all, favorfully see if I raise my right hand. Thank you. Next.
Next, we have a motion to proclaim proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Day and Paula Edwards?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm wrong, please excuse me, I'm sorry. Emily Peacock, I'm so sorry. Gotta hit myself.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I appreciate you letting us be here today. And the proclamation is, whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being. And whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives. And whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions. And whereas there is a strong research that animal companionship, human spirituality, religion, recreation, and social connections and work-life balance can help all Americans protect their health and well-being. And whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation. And whereas with effective treatment, these individuals with mental health and other chronic health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. Whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen share the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to improve mental health wellness and support the prevention efforts. Now, therefore, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim May 2019 as Mental Health Month in Wayne County. We call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Wayne County to recommend our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health and their need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions.
Thank you, Ms. Peacock. Mr. Mayo has made motion to approve the proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month, any discussion? There be no discussion, all in favor, please signify, raise your right hand. Thank you.
I did want to bring your attention that this special form we have, suicide is a Christian issue for our citizens, especially our teenagers. So we are having the form on May the 21st, which is open to the public. Well, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, and again, we appreciate that, and I apologize for the confusion. Number five is motion to approve proclamation for Older Americans Month in Wayne County, and that will be Paula.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for allowing me to come here today to inform you and the public as well about Older Americans Month. May is Older Americans Month, and this year's theme is Connect, Create, and Contribute, which encourages older adults and their communities to connect with friends, family, and services that support participation. Create by engaging in activities that promote learning, health, and personal enrichment, and contribute time, talent, and life experience to benefit others. And I'm gonna read this proclamation for Older Americans Month in Wayne County. Whereas the older adults in Wayne County are the roots from which our community grows, who bestow gifts of wisdom and insight upon younger generations and strengthen the bonds between neighbors to create a better place to live. And whereas our society can be enhanced by older adults aging peacefully in their communities. And whereas the older adults in Wayne County should be commended for their role in creating and bolstering the fiber of our community and nation. And whereas our community can provide that recognition and respect by enriching the quality of life for older Americans by increasing their opportunities to remain in their communities as active and engaged citizens, providing services, technologies, and support systems that allow seniors to foster and maintain connections within the community, emphasizing the value of elders by publicly recognizing their contributions to the diversity, strength, and unity of our community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim May 2019 as Older Americans Month in Wayne County and urges every citizen to take time this month to honor our older adults. Our recognition of older Americans and their involvement in our lives can help us achieve stronger and more meaningful connections to each other and enrich our community's quality of life, adopted this 7th day of May, 2019.
I'd like, oh wait. I'd like to extend a motion to approve this proclamation for Older Americans Month in Wayne County. As I look at our seniors up here, it has never become more apparent that we need to recognize our aging population for the value that aging population brings to our environment. And I congratulate you for the work that you do and your site to make all kinds of things available for the green population.
Thank you, Mr. Carmody. Motion been made, any discussion?
I'd just like to make a brief comment. According to the expert of all the industrialized nation in the world, we are number 15th is what we do with older adults. Something to think about, isn't it?
Yes. All those, favor the motion, please signify, raise your right hand. Thank you.
With your permission, Chairman Gurley, may I share just a couple of events that we're having?
Sure.
Last week, we did kick off Older Americans Month with our Day in the Park in Mount Olive. But we have a few more activities. We have a senior prom this Friday, our first one ever. You have to attend, it's free, but you have to have a ticket. Unfortunately, all the tickets are given out, people were really excited about it. But I still wanted to mention it because the Hennett Family Dentistry is putting this on for our seniors. And they're sponsoring, their staff, their, so we're really excited about that. And we hope this ends up being an annual thing. But I wanted to recognize them for doing this for our seniors Friday night. We also have Eat Smart, Move More, Take Control. Michelle Estrada from the Choropatic Extension, it's an eight-week class that's gonna start this Wednesday, May the 8th, at 12:30. It's an hour-long class, a cooking session, recipes, and how to deal with chronic disease through what you eat. And then we have a free hearing test through Bell Tone Representative that'll be there May the 14th, Tuesday, from 10 to 12. This is free and open to the public. And then we will end it with the Goldsboro Fun Day in the Park for the seniors. And that is a great event, and we just invite you and the public to attend. It will be at the Herman Park Center, at the Herman Park on Wednesday, May the 29th, from 10 to 1. We'll have a DJ out there, we're gonna play games, cakewalk, bingo, line dancing. Just hang out and visit and socialize. Wages will be providing a picnic lunch. One other thing that I'd like to mention is that also in June is Elder Abuse Awareness Month. And so we're doing our first Elder Abuse Awareness Symposium on June the 12th, from 9 to 12:30. We're having three individuals that will present. Laura Gerganis from the Department of Social Services, will talk about types and signs of elder abuse and reporting that. Then we have Ann Elmore from the North Carolina Department of Secretary of State, Agent, Agency Legal Specialist. She's gonna talk about investment and charity fraud and counterfeit prescription drugs. And of course Detective Tom Flores from the Sheriff's Department will talk about exploitation, fraud, and scams. And this, again, is, it is open to the public, it's free, but we do need you to register because there will be a lunch for those who participate. And to register, you need to register by June the 6th. Contact me, Paula Edwards, at 919-705-1785. And I want to thank you for your time and allowing me to share our events. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Paula.
Thank you, Paula. Next, we have a special introduction, and I will turn that over to Commissioner Mayo, if you would like.
Tammy, would you, you guys come up? Kimberly, would you come up to the podium, please? We're gonna do two things at one time today. As most of you know, Tammy Schrenker, existing Department of Social Services Director, is leaving Wayne County. Most are out of disappointment, thank you so much. In the weeks to come, we're gonna have a proper departure for you, okay? Thank you so much for the two years that you spent here in DSS and helping this department really move forward. Now, having said that, I want to say that Kimberly McGuire, I want to introduce her, but before I do, I want to give you a little bit of information about Kimberly. Kimberly began her employment with Wayne County Department of Social Services in 2003. Prior to her accepting the director position, she served as the Deputy Director, the Children and Adult Services Program Administrator, Program Manager, Supervisor, and Social Worker while being employed for 16 years with DSS. She participated on various state committees throughout North Carolina and was the chairman of the North Carolina Child Welfare Supervisory Advisor Committee. My foot. She also chairs the Community Child Protection Team of Wayne County. She also chairs a community child, she has developed charters, strategic plans, conducted and developed statewide conferences and summits on protection, prevention, and strengthening child welfare. She currently has a statewide educational commercial about the day-to-day of being a child welfare supervisor. Ms. McGuire is a graduate of Buton-Cookman University and holds a bachelor's degree in gerontology. She received her master's degree in public administration from Central Michigan University. And at this time, I want to have the pleasure to introducing our new Wayne County DSS Director, effective on May 24, 2019, Ms. Kimberly McGuire.
I just want to take this opportunity to thank the DSS Board for just allowing me this opportunity, working alongside with the employees. It has given them the opportunity to know me. They know my expectations, so I'm just excited to have this chance and opportunity to be able to continue doing the great things that Ms. Schrenker has started with this agency. And we're gonna continue pushing forward and making sure that we provide the best service to our citizens of Wayne County.
Thank you.
You know, it's so bittersweet to stand before you today. I have just had such a wonderful, wonderful experience here in Wayne County. And it, and part of me is very sad to leave. But I just want to say, the agency could not be in better hands with Ms. McGuire. So I know they're gonna continue to move forward and do wonderful things. So I'm just so happy for her and the agency, so thank you.
Thank you.
Before Ms. Tammy says, before you take your seat, let me thank you for, number one, being able to look inside of your agency and see folk who can rise to the occasion. I guess I've never been so secure about something because oftentimes, the person who's leaving doesn't get an opportunity to work closely with folk who're gonna replace them. I would, the other thing that is impressive about this whole situation is I like to see people grow through an organization and then be able to continue in that and therefore reap the rewards of a lot of hard work. It sort of puts a date on my age, but I remember probably around 2003, 2004, somewhere like that. She visited Southern Academy on a regular basis to counsel with some of the most active young people in Wayne County. I was the principal of the alternative school, and I had between 50 and 150 students at times. And she visited there to counsel with those young people. And that's, that's the kind of growth that I, it's just refreshing to be able to see that. Thank you both.
Thank you. Okay, now we have time for public comments. Anyone in the audience that'd like to speak during this time? Please forward.
Good morning, everyone, on this beautiful day. My name is Sylvia Barnes, and I serve as the local branch in AAACP, president for Wayne County. I came before you, I guess it's been several months ago because some, some other citizens of Wayne County had asked me to ask the Board of Commissioners to consider moving one of their meeting times to an evening meeting. And we had not heard any statement or anything as to whether you all was going to or not going to. So they have asked me to come back again and to ask you all to please move one of your meeting times from 9 o'clock in the morning until one of the evening times. I thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Barry Merrill. I live at 432 Club Knolls Road in Dudley. In January and February of this year, Johnston County Planning Board approved over 15 new subdivisions to be constructed in Johnston County, which will mean 15,000 new homes will be built in Johnston County. In Wayne County, we're suffering an outmigration of people, more people leaving than moving in. There's a reason that Johnston County is prospering while Wayne withers. And it actually goes back about 35 years ago. And Johnston was looking at something similar in Wake County. Wake County was just booming. Johnston County was not growing. And the realtors in, in Johnston County said, "We're not selling homes even though we've got cheap land and we've got a much lower tax rate in, in Johnston County. Something's wrong." And they figured out. It was the school system in Johnston County. And they hired a new school superintendent who cleaned up a lot of problems. And they passed hundreds of millions of dollars' worth of, of school bonds to, to construct new schools. They increased teacher pay in Johnston County. And, and I think they raised taxes in order to pay off those bonds and, and pay for those teachers. In those 35 years, this board, from having covered this board and, and the schools, we have fought racial politics and we've, we've fought city-county jealousies. And our school systems have gone down and gone down and gone down. Today, we've got people in Wayne County who actually are applauding the condition of Goldsboro City Schools. They're among the worst in the state. Goldsboro is one of the least desirable places to live in eastern North Carolina. And there are people that applaud that. They're getting their just desserts. We need to put those politics behind us, gentlemen. This, you're, you're on watch now. You're, you're the fellows that are in charge of, of where we are and where we're going. We need to change things. Johnston, Wayne County Schools have, has hired a new superintendent. He is solving problems. But he cannot hire better teachers without more teacher pay. He cannot replace 90-year-old school buildings and 70-year-old school buildings like they did in Johnston County, unless there's money to, to pay for it. Last year at this time, this board proposed a two-and-a-half-cent property tax increase. As Mr. Honeycutt had a news conference, part of that money was going to go for teacher pay and other things that were needed in the county. I'm asking this board, I'm humbly asking this board to consider putting two-and-a-half cents on the property tax rate for this coming year. Again, start a schedule of teacher supplement increases. We're not going to increase the quality of our teachers. We're not going to hold on to our good teachers unless we increase teacher pay. Start setting aside money for school construction. We don't have any money. Our money's obligated for years to come. Lottery money is obligated. We need that money for that. Third thing I'm asking you to do is to replace the air conditioning system at Wayne Community College. It is sorely needed. I would wager to say that there are lots of overjoyed farmers in Johnston County who made their property available for those 15,000 new homes that are going to be constructed. We're talking about on a $15,000, $150,000 home, $37 and $37.50 a year, a little bit over $3 a month in order to get better quality schools in Wayne County. Again, gentlemen, please be the leaders that we elected you to be and, and do the right things for Wayne County. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and all the Commissioners. And my name is Renner Perry Senior. My address is 312 Brentwood Drive, Dudley, North Carolina, 28333. And I'm here to ask a question this morning. The last time I was up here, I thank y'all for the work that y'all have did and thank you for the work that you're going to do. And I'm asking this, this morning in reference to the mitigation in the ballot. For, I'm not sure exactly what I hear. I'd like to ask the question. If I'm wrong, please correct me. Mr. Harris, this Mr. Davis Harris has suggested that Matthew and Florence was two different entities. And I think I heard it correctly and he said that one won't be solved with the other. But I received some literature that stating that, to me and my own understanding, that they are combining those two. And I'm, I'm not sure exactly how to put this, but if that is a fact, then I think that we was misled. And I'm hoping that I'm not because I would like to participate in this ballot and I'm looking forward to it. But if they're going to combine the both and the one that was able to go back to their homes and work on it, pay the insurance to have it done, and then we wind up with Florence. And when it came about with the insurance, trying to get some monies to them to repair the houses and so forth, that it was a different entity according to what I was understanding. So if that be the point, I would like to make sure that this is what we will understand in the future. So I'm asking Commissioners to look into this and correct me if I'm wrong and see whether they're putting both together because if they're going to put both of the things together, I think that's a disservice to the one that's looking to be bought, bought out. And if you will, please do this. I appreciate your time and thank you very much. And Mr. Cimonte, I thank you for the things that you have did for us. And I'll say again, you have helped very much, very, very much. And all the rest of your Commissioners is doing good and I thank you for it. And I just wanted to say, we appreciate it. And just look into that for us, if you will, and find out, are they putting, combining this together for just one or two or was buying it together for either or any, if you will. And I appreciate your time. Thank you both very much. God bless.
Thank you.
I'm Darren Flowers, 303 Cross Street, Fremont, North Carolina. I have a different view of the schools. First, I want to compliment you as Commissioners for your support in building the new buildings that you have and renovating those that you've renovated. We do not, we still need buildings, but we're going to always need buildings. The real thrust of education is in that classroom. And they, like everyone else, need money. I'm asking you to consider strongly an increase in the current operating expense funds for the, for the school system so that they can support or better support those areas that support education. We've got maintenance that provides services to your facilities. We have the support staff that has our functions, the bus drivers, the cafeteria workers, the custodians. But more especially, we have the teachers. The teachers are on that front line. They need all the financial support we can give them. It is a shame when you read the paper, statewide paper that says they're going to be giving teachers $200 or $300 to spend on the classroom so that they can not take it out of their own pocket. And the next day, you pick up the news argus and see a teacher from North Wayne saying she's leaving the store after having bought the, the fourth or fifth ream of paper that she needed in her classroom. We need to better support our instructional program, our buildings, as I say. And, and, and don't get me wrong, Fremont just needs buildings too. But what we need more than anything else is the ample amount of money to support that teacher in that classroom with the current operating funds that can be spent on an annual basis. And I do want to thank you for what you've done because you have done a considerable amount of work in replacing and supporting the construction of buildings. We're a long way away from being complete. But unfortunately, I don't think we'll see it in my lifetime nor in yours where all the buildings in Wayne County and for the schools are there as needed. Thank you again.
Mr. Flowers.
Yes, sir.
I know this breaks some protocol, but if I follow you, you're prioritizing. You want to see us do something for the teachers first, to hold the teachers in the classroom where the children are and to make that an instructional effort. Is that, am I following?
That, that is what I'm requesting. When I was young, they used to say that a teacher, a good teacher could teach kids anywhere. If you put them under a tree, they could teach them. And it's not far from wrong. But the, the teacher needs the resources, especially today in the computer age we're in. They need those resources in that classroom for, to, to be able to teach kids. And we need to compliment our teachers with salaries that reflect what they do and the responsibilities they have. Supplements for Wayne County will never be comparable to Wake County. We need to realize that. But supplements in Wayne County can be better than what they are. I'm, I assume I answered your question. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheriff.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Larry Pierce, Sheriff Wayne County. Just wanted to invite each of you tomorrow morning and the citizens of Wayne County out to Wayne Community College. It will be our law enforcement memorial service at 9:00 AM over by the First Responder Memorial. It's on the north end of the parking lot where the flagpoles are. And I would like to invite you to come out, be with us. It's about a 30-minute program. It's been a deadly year already for the United States for law enforcement and it gives us a time to remember those men who have lost their lives, particularly those in Wayne County. Their names will be spoken of tomorrow and remembered tomorrow. Also, we'd like to thank you for the support that you give to our law enforcement officers. We did lose a law enforcement officer this weekend in Mooresville. Remember them, him and their families. So come out and be with us if you can. Thank you.
What time, Sheriff?
9:00 AM, Wayne Community College. Be out by the flagpoles, on the north end of the parking lot, the memorial. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Does anyone else like to speak during public comments time? Seeing no ones closed. Performance Committee, Commissioner Acock.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We have some reappointments and some appointments today. First of all, we'd like to recommend the appointment, the reappointment of Melanie Sanders, Charles Brogdon, and Fletcher Bazell to the East Carolina Workforce Development Board. That's in form of a motion.
I've heard the motion. Any discussion on this appointments? No discussion. All favor, please see if I raise your right hand.
Also, Mr. Chairman, we'd like to reappoint Deborah Austin to the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. That's in form of a motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Any discussion on the motion? There be no discussion, motion, all favor, please see if I raise your right hand.
We'd like to reappoint Mr. Chris Cox to the Wayne County Planning Board. That's the form of a motion.
Any discussion on the motion? If no discussion, motion, all favor, please see if I raise your right hand. Thank you.
We'd like to appoint, the reappointment of Mel Reed Jr., Andy Balance, Clara Howell, J. Davis Sorrell, to the Fremont Board of Adjustments. Put that in the form of a motion, sir.
I've heard the motion. Any discussion on the motion? No discussion. All favor, please see if I raise your right hand. Thank you.
Also have the reappointment of Beatrice Edmanson, Steve Evans, Gerald Balance, Steve Hooks, John Pippin Jr. to the Fremont Planning Board. Form of a motion.
I've heard the motion. Any discussion on the motion? There be no discussion. All favor, please see if I raise your right hand. Thank you.
Now we have some appointments, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to appoint Wayne Jackson, Fremont Planning Board. That's the form of a motion.
Heard the motion. Any discussion. All favor, please see if I raise your right hand.
Like to appoint Judith Gray, Edward Davis, to Wayne County Tourism Development Alliance. Form of a motion.
I've heard the motion. Any discussion. All favor, please see if I raise your right hand.
Also like to recommend the appointment of Diane Belmont and Edward Davis to the Goldsboro Tourism Council. And some clarification on that, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Davis is a joint position. He serves on both the Wayne County Tourism Development Alliance and the Goldsboro Tourism Council. And that's the form of a motion, sir.
I hear any discussion, motion. No discussion. All favor, please see if I raise your right hand. Thank you.
That's all for today, sir.
Thank you. Y'all had a busy morning, little guy. Okay, unfinished business. Mr. Honeycutt.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, under unfinished business is a motion to approve agreement for engineering services to Wayne County for the Genoa Waste Water Collection System Sewer Study. As the Board is aware, last year in our 18, 19 fiscal year budget, we set aside $125,000 to begin looking at this study. Again, we need to understand what the problems and issues are. As part of this study, we would do a smoke test for the entire system. We'll update and look at our manholes, but also update our GIS database. We'll also do some video TV inspection of our lines to see where the issues are. But along with this, we will get a conditional report back to the Board that'll set priorities. And we sent out requests for qualifications. We did interview three firms with staff and recommended Withers Ravenel for a total project fee of $110,000. And with the Board's approval, we'd like to recommend Withers Ravenel. With final approval be with our county attorneys with the final contract.
Mr. Chairman, a move approved.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Dawkins to approve the agreement for engineering services.
Do we need to add in about the approval by the county attorney?
Conditional fund approved by the attorneys.
Okay. Motion's made. Any discussion? Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, as some of our list viewers that watch this on Channel 10, this, this is not the first time this issue has come up. It's like it's an ongoing thing. I know this is at least a couple of, three times that we've had issues where we haven't spent a lot of money on, on the sewer process. But I just want the citizens and taxpayers to understand that this is an ongoing situation. And this probably won't be the last time we have to spend money on, on sewer. It's just, it's, it's just, I guess you'd call it a cancer. But I just want the citizens to know that this, that we, you know, the studies and tests have been run in the, in the past or performed properly and all. It's just, it's just an aggravating, ongoing, bad situation that, that we have to spend tax dollars on to, to keep this up. Thank you.
Well, and, and one of the things in the follow-up, Commissioner Acock, is once we get that priority needs list, we want to address the priorities and hopefully we will not be having to come back as much as we have in the past if we can fix the problems moving forward. So, but I totally agree with you.
Anyone else? If not, in favor of Commissioner Dawkins, motion, please see if I raise your right hand. All right, thank you.
All right. Next, under unfinished business is a motion to award bid for stream debris removal project, Part 5 to Coastal Plains Clearing. Again, we have bid out the section for Section 5. This is part of the Golden Leaf Grant that we have received. We received five bids and the low bid is Coastal Plains Clearing out of Seven Springs for $398,115.76.
We recommend approval.
All right, I have a motion.
Motion to approve.
All right, Mr. Perry, motion to approve. Any discussion? All favor, please see if I raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, consent agenda, we were briefed and reviewed at our 8:00 AM briefing. I asked for a motion to approve a consent agenda.
Subsume.
Commissioner Cimonte, motion made. Commissioner Camardi, motion made. All favor, please, if I raise your right hand. Thank you. Your business, Mr. Honeycutt.
For, I'd like to turn it over to Allison Speight, our Finance Director, who will go over a recommendation for a vendor for finance software, well, countywide software.
And I'm going to ask Ryan Preble and Ginger to join me up here, and I'm going to probably embarrass them and ask the rest of the committee to join us on the front row so that if you have any questions at the end, that they will be available for those. So we are presenting to you today the replacement of FMS HRMS software. This stands for Financial Management Solution and Human Resources Management Solution, and it encompasses all the pieces of finance plus human resources and payroll. So this is, this is the software that we are vetting and that we want to present to you today. So I want to start with why we need new software. We are certainly not glutton for punishment on our own. We have run into some serious issues that kind of impede our ability to conduct business in an efficient way. We've run into some issues that have really hampered some of the policies we want to put in place, and we feel like that the only way to solve this would be to look at what some of our other software providers can, can give us. So first of all, we really need to upgrade our business processes. We are a very paper-heavy organization right now, and this, I mean, when I say paper-heavy, I'm talking contracts, purchase orders, invoices, checks, PAFs, Budget Amendments Journal entries. All of these things that we do, there are hundreds of these that happen in a week, in a month, and, and these have the ability to run through an electronic process and, and go through an electronic approval process, which means it's going to save us a lot of time on storing those documents, on looking for those documents, and on processing those documents. So that is one of the big things that we want to get out of this. We also want to be able to integrate with, with other software in a more advanced way. So we have some other capabilities out there that would really help us do business in a more cost-effective way and provide some other indirect benefits to us. Those are electronic reconciliation of our purchasing cards. We have over 200 of those out there that are reconciled manually each month. Our bank reconciliation, which seems very simple, but takes one of my staff members between probably eight to 12 hours a month to do, which can be reconciled on a more automated basis. And then we have other things like electronic payments and ACH payments that could be done in an electronic way. And then we also have, and I'm going to turn this part over to Ginger because she can really speak to the HR side better than I can, but especially for HR and payroll, which do not have as many staff members, there are some real advantages that they are looking for in this new software. So I'll let her speak to that a little bit.
Good morning, gentlemen. To reiterate what Allison said, we are a paper-heavy office currently. Our workflow process takes about two weeks just to hire a new employee. The PAF has to come to the director, back to our office, back to payroll, back to the county manager, and it, it takes a long time to get a very simple process accomplished. Also, when we hire new employees, they have to fill out 12 different forms on their first day. That could be easily accomplished with one simple software program that could pull it all together. Our office could spend more time working on employee initiatives, wellness initiatives, just make the environment of the office better for employees, but we spend a lot of time filing paper and multiplying our workload by repeating processes over and over for the same purpose.
And one of the other pieces that we want to do that would, that would help with that is an employee vendor self-service portal. So that actually allows the employees and vendors to provide information to us from, from their homes in a secure setting, and it eliminates a lot of the data entry that we put in on our side and multiple times. So that's, that's some of the wants that we have out of this. I want to talk a little bit about some of the needs that we have for this, and that has to do a lot with our current software provider. And I, I don't want to get up here and say that we have a bad software provider. We've been very happy with them, but they have become, they actually have a new software system that they would like us to upgrade to, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a few minutes. But what we have now is very limited. They have decreased their support for that software down to one support person, and he does continue to help us, but at some point, it's not going to be cost beneficial to them to provide one support person for one customer. So we do see the writing on the wall and what that's eventually going to go to. We've had this software since, I believe, 1999. It does have, I'm sorry, does my sound? 98, excuse me. And it does have a lot of cumbersome data entry. We have multiple screens to set up one employee, and that's just one example. So, you know, there's, there's just a lot of issues with just simple data entry in the software. We have some capabilities that we're limited on, some benefits like 401K that we can't quite offer the flexibility we want to be able to offer with some of our benefits because the software actually cannot do it. And then I've talked about the decreased support. The other piece I want to mention is we do want to prepare ourselves for a future timekeeping system implementation. And I know that that is a sensitive word here, but we are not doing timekeeping at this time. What we want to do is prepare ourselves to be able to do that, you know, a couple, three years down the road. But we have to get this piece of it fixed, and we have to get it up to par before we move on to timekeeping. So that is the other piece that we want to get out of this. I briefly want to mention to you our key decision-makers. Our software selection committee is made up of eight individuals right now, and we wanted to make sure we covered all the relevant areas. So we have myself, who's Finance Director, Ginger Moore, Assistant HR Director, Ryan Preble, IT Director, Janice Rice, Accounting and Budget Manager, Noel Woods, Purchasing Manager, Angie Boswell, Assistant Finance Director, and then we have two that cannot be with us today, Chris Stone, who is our Operations Manager for IT, and Leanne Blanton, who is our Payroll Administrator. So we wanted to make sure you knew that we had all the key parties involved at the beginning of the process to have input in this. We also conducted a GEMS survey. GEMS is our current software solution, and we sent out a survey to all of our employees that use GEMS because it's not just us who uses it, it's hundreds of employees. So we wanted to get feedback from them on what they wanted to see, what are the problems they are running into, and what do they feel like are real issues to being able to do their daily jobs with this software. And we got some really good responses on that survey and are very appreciative to them for taking the time to do that. Management has also been very supportive of our work that we've been doing, and I did want to just thank them for that because they've given us a lot of flexibility on making sure we vetted this properly. And then finally, to you as Board of Commissioners, we just, I mean, I want to thank you. You have some decisions to make. We're going to provide you the best information possible to make those decisions. I do realize that there is a level of comfort that we may not be able to achieve at the beginning, but our hope is that we can make you feel as comfortable as possible and that the more information we relay to you, that will just make you feel that much better about it. I want to also briefly go over our software selection process. So I think this is really important because I want to make sure that you understand that we have given this a lot of time and effort. We began working on this, well, actually, some of us have begun working on it probably two or three years ago, but the real work started about a year ago in May of 2018. We submitted a request for information, that's an RFI, and basically, we sent out information for vendors to submit to us what was out there, and we wanted to know what capabilities are out there, what software companies are out there. And so we didn't want to go into it with just some preconceived notions about who we think would be better. We wanted them to show us, what do you have? What, you know, what can serve us? So when we got our information in, we received information from seven vendors. We were immediately able to eliminate one just simply because they could not provide us everything that we needed. They only provided mostly the HR payroll side, and we needed a finance solution as well. We conducted conference calls, discovery calls, and did some brief software demonstrations with the remaining six vendors, and were able to further eliminate a vendor just based on the fact that Ryan had some history with that type of software. It was not necessarily a, a history that he wanted to repeat here. And so they, they had to have a lot of customization, and we just didn't feel like they had the knowledge of governmental accounting that we needed. So we held five vendor demonstrations on-site at the Maxwell Center. These were very intense demonstration reviews. They were, they ranged from half a day to an entire day for each vendor, and we really could have spent more time than that, to be honest with you. We were able from that point to eliminate it down to our top three. And I want to talk just a minute about, one of the ones we eliminated is our current software provider, which is Harris, and they provide us with GEMS. The reason that we eliminated them is because they just have not been able to advance in the North Carolina governmental marketplace. They really do not have many more clients than what they had back in 1998. The software provider, the software that they have now, all of us felt like we would be just as well off staying with what we had if we went with their new software. It did not provide a lot of advantages for the time and effort it would take to switch over. It was not cost efficient for us, and it would not provide us the, the upgrade in, in business processes that we wanted to see. So they really were not a tough competitor for us. So that was kind of disappointing, but I wanted to let you know we did vet them. Edmonds was another one we eliminated. They cater mostly to smaller towns and municipalities, and they just could not compete with the top three. So our top three were Workday, Superioron, and Munis, Tyler's Munis. We visited counties in North Carolina with, we visited one county per vendor on-site to talk to this county about their implementation, to talk to them about their relationship with their software vendor, and, you know, their experience and what they, what they would recommend to us. Aside from what we got on the vendors, we did receive a lot of good learning lessons on how to properly implement software or what not to do. But we used a grading matrix to evaluate these top three vendors, and that is detailed in your packet that you have. If you have trouble sleeping tonight, there's about 30 pages worth of, of detail on this process and on how we went about grading these vendors, how we went about vetting these vendors. So I was not going to go over that today because that would be extremely lengthy, but if you, you know, if you have any questions about it, you can look at it, but that, there's a, there's a pretty detailed grading matrix in there on each one of these. So we also conduct additional reference inquiries with counties about this and in their process and how they upgraded, and then from there, we selected Munis as our top vendor. And just to give you the short of that, Workday is in Buncombe County. They are probably the most, the most robust of vendors, but they are a very progressive vendor and deal mostly in the private sector, and they just could not give us the governmental accounting knowledge and experience we needed. They also had a very different chart of accounts, which I'm not really comfortable with, with going with based on how we have to report to the LGC and do our audits. So we also had Superioron's one solution. They were not quite as robust in the HR payroll area, and we do have some issues on the support they would be able to provide because they have been bought out, and we've, we've received some negative feedback on that. As far as price, they, we did not request price in our RFI because we wanted to look at just what they had available, but the top three were pretty, all competitive in price. So from that point, we moved to our top vendor, which is Munis, and that is who we are recommending to you today. Let me switch over to my notes. So Munis is really, they have a very heavy North Carolina presence here. They've probably got about 57 to, 56 to 57 counties in North Carolina that use them as their software provider. When I go to my conferences, when Noel attends her conferences, when you ask around, most of them have just switched to Munis or are switching to Munis. They just, they have this market here, and that is because they have a really detailed knowledge of governmental accounting. They are not blazing new trails, but they're, they know governmental accounting really well, and that's what we want. We also want a local presence that we don't have to travel, you know, halfway across the country to have user conferences or to get training. We want people here that we can get feedback on, and that if we have issues, we can go out to our community and find out how they're resolving those issues. So that is a big advantage they had. All the things that we're wanting, you know, they were able to meet and exceed our management dashboards, electronic routing and approval of transactions, drill-down features of documents, and then robust reporting. All of these things, you know, were just met and exceeded our expectations, and I'll let Ginger go over what her, what she saw on the HR payroll side.
On the HR and payroll side, we currently have no viable way to efficiently track employees from recruitment to retirement. Everything we do is handwritten and placed in a personnel file. This Munis offered us the option to track an employee for life, and that includes promotions, easy access to personnel files, easy access to performance reviews. We could also hold doctor's notes or anything that would be connected to that one employee. It would easily allow us to pull any data that we might need for EEOC reporting, FMLA, workman's compensation, things of that nature. It also gave us an employee self-service portal. Our offices, both HR and Finance and Payroll, spend a lot of time printing off direct deposit forms for employees, W2s, copies of new updated tax forms. This would allow employees to go in securely, print these items themselves. But to me, I think one of the most important factors was the opportunity to electronically store documentation for employees. I just feel we're really paper-heavy, and this would clean it up and make it a little more efficient for my office, payroll, Finance to pull information.
So some of the final things I want to talk about, they did offer us a competitive and flexible cost structure, and we'll get into this more when we bring the contract back to you for review, but you have the ability to add and take away modules and things like that based on what you, what you feel like your need, the needs of your organization are. And then they offer a on-premise or cloud-based solution, and that is something that we are still trying to vet and will also address in the contract process. I do want to mention one other thing. There are three gentlemen here, our, our experts in planning and inspections, Barry, Julio, and Steve. The reason we are bringing them into this is they have had, they did a couple years ago, a, an informal process to select new software for their office for planning and inspections, and so we didn't know this at the time, but when we got to our top three, it came up that they had actually chosen Tyler's solution, which Tyler owns Munis. They had chosen Tyler's solution for their software, and it is called Intergov. So when we've selected Munis as our top vendor, that was a real benefit to us because if we go with Munis, we can take advantage, along with planning and inspections, on saving some cost in, in, you know, travel, implementation costs, training, and things like that by bringing them in under our contract. So when we come back to you with the contract, we would like to also include the planning and inspections piece of that, which is called Intergov. And I asked them here today, they've already vetted their process, they've already gone through all of the things that we just went through, but if you had any questions for them at the end, I wanted them to be here in case you had any questions specifically about their software. But that was, that was kind of an unexpected benefit to this process that we had. So the next steps are, we are asking you today if you would consider recommending our vendor, our recommended vendor, which is Tyler's Munis and Intergov, and begin authorization to start contract negotiations. We will not be signing a contract until we bring that back before you. We are just simply asking for approval to move forward with this vendor and begin those contract vetting process. We would like to bring back a tentative contract proposal date around July of this year, and then we'll work in the fall and winter to begin preparing for implementation. We'll develop a user team with our departments out in the county, and then our hope is to go live with financials and Intergov in July of 2020. So that gives us a year to plan and to prepare, and then the following January, we would go live with HR and payroll. These are tentative. We haven't, we've obviously not worked with Munis on this, but this is just what we had in mind. And then hopefully by 2022, we could begin working on the timekeeping piece and integrating with that. And that is, that is what we have for you. I know it was a little bit lengthy, and I apologize for that, but we wanted to make sure that you, that, that you feel good that we have vetted this thoroughly and feel good about the recommendation we're making. Our committee was unanimous in this, in the selection that we made. So with that, if you have any questions, we'll be glad to answer them.
Mr. Chairman. Ron.
Yes, sir.
And I've already known the answer to this question, but I wanted others to hear it. The data conversion, do you see any problems with that? From GEMS to this new software?
No, they'll, they'll, we'll
No, they'll, they'll, we'll definitely go through a data migration plan beforehand and make sure that's where we want it to be. Have, have talked to them about the process and worked out all, they, they've assured us that process will flow smoothly, seamlessly, and they've done it before, so that's, that's a key.
Right, we got told that was before too, so.
But we've, we've, we've checked it this.
We asked them for a list of those customers that they converted so that we could talk with them.
Any idea the, the years of services software will provide the county?
Well, typically, I know you're sorry to say. A 10-year software. I mean, you're going to look at versioning, it all depends on the versioning updates they do, but it's, it's easy to say 10 years and go from there.
Okay.
Just based on versioning and how they support it going forward.
I would like to say that I hope I don't ever do another one of these again, so that might be longer than that.
I was just thinking back, I'm sure you considered, like over in DSS, when we went paperless, one of the expenses that we incurred was a huge amount of scanning of paper documents to get into the system. So is that something that will be in addition to what we're looking at here? Is that right?
So we actually already do scanning of our records after the fact, so we will not, we should not have to do any additional scanning of prior year records, which will probably save on some of those costs.
Save a lot of money.
So the scanning we will do now will be with, they sent us a list of equipment. I, I think the cost of our equipment that we would have to purchase is very minimal because they are able to use the technology that we have now, like our scanners we use now. So I, I don't feel like that, I think that will be included in the implementation cost. While we don't have a set price, I can tell you just from looking at what they submitted, because we were not, we did not ask for price, some of them did submit prices, that we are still within that ballpark that we've budgeted. And, and that includes planning inspections as well.
Okay, thank you.
You mentioned how many counties Munis does.
Yes, so they have about 56 to 57 counties in North Carolina, just in North Carolina, and I mean, out of 100 counties, so they've got well over 50% of the, the share. They're strong.
Yeah.
And you mentioned integration with Northwoods, or integration with our softwares. We have been working with our departments to find out what software they use, I mean, just in anything they use, and compiling that so that we can begin preparing for all the different integrations that might have to take place, and make sure we include those in, you know, the cost and preparation of, of doing that.
As long as I don't, I won't pay any attention to whether Mary's going to sleep fast or not.
I don't believe it.
Excuse me, Mr. Manager, I shouldn't have said that.
Well, that was a question that, so, and I, I guess, Mr. Mayo, you may open. Yeah, that question, because I know that Department of Social Services went through some changes and so forth, and I was just wondering if it was all going to mesh with each other.
So it, it depends on what kind of software it is. Some of it is, is probably not really meant to talk with each other, but some of your other software, like tax system, for instance.
So, okay, so this software is going to just be for finance and personnel and human resource?
Finance, HR, payroll, inspections, and planning. And that will be for the entire county, so is that?
Probably, probably watching TV is probably maybe one of my downfall, but Ryan, I think they did, they did yesterday or the day before, and I can't give you a lot of specifics, but there was a program about cyber, cyber warfare. And, and this is just a comment of whatever. The more that we go to technology, it seems like the more opportunity there are for people to attack what we're doing. Now, this is just the old-fashioned concern. As far as getting into technology is one thing, but I do not want us to eliminate the employees' face-to-face contact on things that's, that's, that's very relevant. I, I would not be happy to know that real decisions could be made electronically without an employee being able to know that they came face-to-face with the document that was relevant.
Well, I'll say this, and speaking for you, I guess, is that a, a piece of that that we want to try and do is provide a self-service portal, and that self-service portal is very limiting in what you can do. It's mainly downloading documents, updating mailing address, things like that. It's, it doesn't provide a whole lot of inside look into that employee's personnel file. It's just to simply take some of the more mundane tasks, also of HR and payroll. So when we say that it's a self-service porter, portal, you don't have full access to what Allison, her staff do, or Ginger's staff. It's just to, to get some of those smaller tasks off, then those, the repetitive tasks that they deal with. But yes, to speak to your, the more and more we do online, of course, there's obviously that potential, but that's why we're trying to limit that. And everything we're doing is behind equipment that we already have in place to remedy those, remediate those issues that we might run across. So yes, you're all right.
Does our contract with GEMS expire in July of 2020? You know, when our?
It is a, it is a year-to-year contract, and it's mostly for upgrades, maintenance, support.
It runs July to July? Is it? Well, one of the questions, I mean, it just, if these folks have converted on 55, 56 counties, it seems like they could accomplish that a little bit faster than a year. You're talking about a year to implement this?
That is our timeline, so I'm being super cautious. And so that is why it's taken us a year to vet this, because we wanted, we did not want to be rushed in this process. When you're rushed, you overlook things, you make mistakes. There's just, there's a lot of things to consider in this project, and I didn't want to get locked into a timeline and limit ourselves on how much we could test this thing and make sure that it was going to do what we needed to do.
But, but you have spoken with the other counties?
Yes, sir.
And you feel extremely comfortable from your conversations with them of their conversions?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Now, I will, I mean, to be extremely transparent, they're not all, they're not GEMS customers. We do have a list of GEMS customers we can talk to, but they have various backgrounds of, from other softwares that they converted from. We have talked to multiple counties about their conversions and their recent conversions. Some of them have been a long time ago, but most of them have been in the last two or three years.
Were any of these GEMS customers that converted?
Not the ones we spoke with, just because GEMS doesn't really have a lot of North Carolina customers. I think they only have maybe two, including us, two or three, including us. So we have got a list of references that we are going to contact next before we sign a contract to ensure that what we're being told checks out.
And in my understanding, that the conversion for the inspections department would occur at the same time, July of next year?
That, that's our goal. We, this is a tentative date based on, we, we kind of worked out with IT's projects that they had going on with other projects in the county, like, you know, the 911 Center, and sort of mapped out what we think that we can do and feel good about it. I think once we get into the contract process with Tyler and talk about Munis and Intergov, we'll have a more hard and fast date. I feel like probably the financials and Intergov, which is the planning and inspections, will go at the same time.
But is it possible to possibly go ahead and, and convert over inspections and, and planning prior to the actual financial?
I, I would think it is, because there, theirs is probably.
So y'all are keeping that open?
Yes, sir. Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Sounds a bit like they fully vetted this thing, and I've been making a motion that we go ahead and move it forward.
Motion to move forward. Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll pay a please to see if I raise your right hand.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, if, if I commit, I want to thank the board for your support on that, and also want to thank the team for what they do. They, they have understood fully the issues and pitfalls that we've had in the past, and they've wanted to make sure that they got it right, and I truly believe that they've got it right. So, well, thanks.
We're going to make history with this one.
Good job.
It'll be the first software program that we've all, that worked.
I had, I had something I needed to add. We are going to do, run a parallel system before we go live.
Absolutely.
Okay. Please do. Thank you.
All right, we're going to.
Well, one, one more thing, just on, on, on doing this, none of y'all are old enough to remember, it was an old TV program come on years and years ago, and one of the statements was, make sure you're right, and then go ahead to make sure you're right.
All right, we'll hit the pause button and take a quick break.
Yes, sir.
Seven, eight minutes worth.
Seven, eight minutes worth. In case we're back in session, Mr. Honeycutt, number two, on a new business.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we discussed in the pre-agenda meeting, our certification policy, we have had a policy, but we've not been very specific about what we pay and what we don't pay. And what, in working with, and I really appreciate our HR department, I appreciate Chip, I appreciate our department heads, we have gone back through and really vetted to see what is value-added to Wayne County and what is not value-added. So, we wanted to make sure that whatever the certifications were, they were really needed for that job and also for their job to do better. So, I can read the memo if you'd like, or if we have any specific questions, we will put this as a recommendation.
Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I've read it.
Everybody good with it?
I'm good.
All right. Just press on with, let's go to number three.
Oh, we need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve it.
So, we're doing more than discussing it. Okay. Motion to approve, Mr. Pate. I want to play a please see if I raise right here.
And just to let you know, if we amend it, if there's some changes, this is what we will be amended as far as the list coming back. We believe we're fairly complete with the certifications, but if things changes and things are added or not, we will bring it back to you for approval.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Catch a Glimpse for May 2019, produced by Wayne County Public Affairs. In our April From the Flightline segment, we sat down with Benito Rodriguez, who handles training at Seymour Johnson Air Force Base. And Dr. Burt Lewis from the University of Mount Olive Music Program stopped by to talk about all the great music events going on in April. Mark McGrath from Wings Over Wayne came by to talk about the event happening in May, right here in Goldsboro. And we made a delicious kachumer salad. We produced a video for the Wayne County Public Library for this year's National Library Week, where we sat down with Wayne County residents and found out what the library means to them. And of course, Wings Over Wayne 2019 was a huge success for Wayne County. Wayne County Public Affairs produced billboards to promote the event before and during the airshow, as well as all the related marketing materials for Wayne County. We continued our Pet of the Month sponsorship with local radio stations, and Public Affairs attended the North Carolina City-County Communicators Conference. That's Catch a Glimpse for May 2019. We'll see you again next month.
Again, thanks to Public Affairs for all their hard work and what they've done. And speaking with respect to Wings Over Wayne, on behalf of the Public Affairs Department and county, we wanted to show you that we had this spring, and then we'll place this in our Commissioner's meeting room as the other Wings Over Wayne poster is. But it really was an incredible event. I think it was very well-attended. I appreciate the board commissioners very much. This year, we will support our staff. And we had staff out there. We had a lot of our EMS staff that we fed, our sheriff's department. It really was an excellent day and a lot of time and effort planning between Public Affairs, between EMS, emergency management. It really did go off without a hitch. And we just are very proud. And thank you, board commissioners, for your support on that. So, any questions of Wings Over Wayne? Next, I did want to thank is Public Affairs and EMS and Kendall and our maintenance group again for the wonderful grand opening of our Nahuna Station, Station 7, out at Nahuna and Hennett Road. It was very well-attended last Friday morning, and it is off and running. The building turned out great, and we had the contractors show up as well. So, Kendall did a great job making sure that all the punch lists were done, and I think everybody's happy with the move-in. So, thank you for those that showed up. Couple of things I need to ask you about is North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, the County Assembly Day is this Wednesday, May 8. And did not know if anybody was planning to attend at this time. I will be here Wednesday, so I will not be there. So, I'll be here Wednesday. So, but if you would like to go and your plans change, just let me know, and we'll make arrangements. Also, wanted to remind you of a... We are hosting the base community council meeting. That will be at the Maxwell Center on May 23 at noon. So, if you don't have that on your calendar yet, we'll make sure. But we are hosting that, and we wanted to do that at the Maxwell Center. And just a wanted, something I just wanted to mention, I'm very proud of. I will not be in the office Friday. My oldest son is graduating from Carolina.
Congratulations.
So, I'm very, very proud of him.
From where?
It's not my first choice. It was not my first choice.
Hey, boy, congratulations. So, is he moving back home?
No, no, no. Not no, but no. No, but I'm very proud and just wanted to mention that as well. And that is all I have. Oh, I do have one other segment that I do want to read. There's been some posts on social media with respect to Fremont Rescue and about the differences between what is going on. And we wanted to clarify some of those issues. And if the board's okay, I would like to read this. One of the things that been mentioned is that Fremont Rescue had not been notified that the county was moving to the Nahuna Station. As the board is aware, we have been talking about this for two to approximately three years, that this was eventually going to happen, and it was going to be a move. We really do appreciate Fremont Rescue for hosting our EMS station for all these years. But as you are also aware, the county paid the utilities at that site for these many years. If you average it out, it was about $900 a month between internet and water and sewer and electricity. So, the county did pick up that cost for them allowing us to use the site. One of the things that said on social media was, "We are taking away service from the town of Fremont." Well, really, we're enhancing the service because now they will be served by two stations. One will be the Nahuna Station. The entire district will be better served. One's the Nahuna Station, and one is the Antioch Station. So, now, any resident within the Fremont District will be eight minutes within any EMS station. So, which is really a more centralized, better location that'll serve the entire district much better. But again, if ambulances are in station, there should be no more than eight minutes away from answering a call. One of the other things that was mentioned is about, they were unaware. We've met with Fremont Rescue on multiple occasions, but wanted to clarify something. Wayne County EMS has been responsible for service since 2002. Fremont Rescue has not had the responsibility of transport since 2002. This has been the sole source and responsibility of Wayne County EMS. Fremont Emergency Services is not in the Wayne County EMS plan to provide emergency care, which is required by the state of North Carolina. So, they're not in our emergency care plan. It's not been vetted and approved by our medical director. So, even if they wanted to, they cannot transport because they're not a part of the plan. Fremont Rescue has not, again, provided dispatch ambulance service since 2002. We do want to mention that we were trying to work with Fremont in 2018. In November this year, we gave them a radio that was really to be used as solely backup. You know, this was in case something catastrophic happened, that they would have that capabilities. Well, they probably took that a little too far and started answering calls with the radio. And again, we were not dispatching them. They were answering the calls themselves. But again, that kind of interfered with some of our EMS, some of our fire calls, and also some of our air flight calls with UNC Air. So, we, there was multiple violations, and we asked that that radio be returned back to Wayne County. And it was. One thing I do want to mention, and we really do appreciate Fremont Rescue, especially their junior program. We began funding that last year at a much higher rate than we had in the past. I believe it's about $4,000 or $4,500 that we, is approximately $4,500 that we have funded them last year. We are planning to fund them the same amount this year. It is a great benefit. It really is the only junior rescue program left within the county. Commissioner Gurley knows that some of his nurses that he dealt with over at UNC Wayne came from that junior rescue program. And it really is a great benefit to our community. And we really do want to continue to support that because we want them to become our next EMS staff to work for Wayne County. So, whatever we can do to encourage that, I believe this board is very committed to, and we want to still support. We still want to, and we appreciate what Fremont Rescue does and what their history and what they have meant to our community. However, as a dispatched agency, we have one agency that is licensed to provide this service in Wayne County, and that's Wayne County EMS. So, again, not meaning, there was just a lot of misinformation that's been on Facebook, and we just wanted to clarify that with the board and making sure you didn't have any questions or any concerns. But thank you.
Thanks, Chair. Yes, sir.
Got to ask a question.
Are any of these personnel moving over to the new station?
All of our person, all of our personnel.
All of our personnel?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And I'm done. Please, sir.
All right. Commissioner Comey, let's start with Mr. Bell today.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. First, I'd like to go back a little bit after we had two people to come up and talk about schools this morning. I would just like to mention that during the time that I've been on this board, we added about eight to 10 new classrooms up at Charles B. A. Cop. We built a new gym. We completely remodeled Norway Middle School. Completely remodeled Eastern Wayne Middle School. Did a new gym over at Rosewood. Did some work down at Mount Olive Middle. Did some work over at Brogdon Elementary. Some work at Goldsboro High. And in the past three or four years, we built three brand-new schools. So, I just wanted the people out in the community to know that we have put some money into schools, and we've been, matter of fact, before the new board came on, everything that the school board asked for, we did it for them. So, there's never been any dragging our feet, not supporting schools. But my main topic today is to talk about the low-performing schools. Now, I don't care how many buildings you build, it only educate children. Now, I don't know if the school board or the school administration are being negligent or inefficient, but the results are the same. Kids are not being educated in those low-performing schools. So, what I want somebody to tell me, show me a plan as to what they're going to do about these low-performing schools. I have never seen this done since I've been on the board. It's always been about brick and mortar, and that doesn't educate kids. I know they need nice facilities, and I'm in support of that. But give me a plan, and let me know how you're going to cause kids to read at the fourth grade level, if they're in the fourth grade, instead of reading kindergarten. So, I don't know if anybody else have the same notion that I have, but it should be all about the kids of Wayne County, not about some mega buildings that look good but don't educate kids. So, we have drafted up a resolution through the attorneys and county manager and others that we'd like to submit. And I'm going to put that in the form of a motion to have the county manager to read it today and pass out each one of you guys a copy. You know, there's one thing that I used to do when I was a manager in probation and parole. I used to talk about using the three Cs. And that's something that I don't see happening here in Wayne County. That's communication, coordination, and cooperation. Now, if you do that, you're going to get some things done.
And just to follow up with Commissioner Bell, and I appreciate his leadership on this. One of the things that we did want to focus in working with the attorneys on is House Bill 850. And House Bill 850 would basically repeal the ability of the Board of Education to sue...
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let me say this before we...
I'm sorry.
Before we go. I had a school board member to call me a couple of weeks ago, and he was talking about taking us to court. And I assured him that you cannot, you can take us to court, but you cannot sue the county commission. Sue the citizens of Wayne County, the property owners, the taxpayers. Those are the ones that you sue. And the only people that's going to benefit, there's no winners in a lawsuit. The only people that's going to benefit are the attorneys who filed the lawsuit. Okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner Bell. But again, House Bill 850 has been introduced that would repeal that ability for school systems to be able to sue counties and county commissioners with respect to capital outlay. And one of the things that this resolution also addresses is support of House Bill 850. So, I would be glad to read this if you would like. Whereas, the North Carolina General Assembly has removed the ability of boards of education to sue counties in a dispute over current expense funding. And whereas, the North Carolina Supreme Court has ruled that boards of education cannot sue counties for failing to provide sufficient funds for the North Carolina constitutional requirement for a public education. And whereas, House Bill 850 has been introduced to repeal the ability of boards of educations to sue counties and county commissioners with respect to capital outlay funds. And whereas, when a board of education sues the county commissioners and county, as Commissioner Bell said, it is in fact a suit against all taxpayers in the county, and the only ones who will benefit are the lawyers involved in the suit and experts that they use as witnesses. And whereas, Wayne County commissioners have provided or allowed the construction and improvement of public schools in Wayne County to the extent of $93.2 million in the last six years. And whereas, Wayne County schools have at least 11 low-performing schools, including some in new and renovated schools. And whereas, a school board member in a public meeting has recently urged the Board of Education to correct the problems at the low-performing schools. And whereas, more than 37% of students at low-performing schools were not proficient in math based on integrated tests. And whereas, more than 44% of students in low or low-performing schools were not proficient in reading based on integrated tests. And whereas, the Board of Education's curriculum and instruction team has determined that there is a need for teacher coaching and support, administrative coaching and support, and professional development. And whereas, two Wayne County schools are currently categorized as restart schools due to continuous low performance over several years. And whereas, one restart school, Carver Heights Elementary, was in danger of becoming the second school in North Carolina to be ordered into the Innovative School District, ISD, by the State Board of Education. And whereas, the State Board of Education approved the Carver Heights restart application only after the North Carolina General Assembly modified its ISD laws to allow the State Board of Education, under certain circumstances, to approve the restart model for schools facing acceptance into the Innovative School District. And whereas, the Wayne County Board of Education has hired an entity to assist in its redistricting. And whereas, funds which are requested and secured for the Board of Education have not been spent on current building projects. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the Wayne County Board of Commissioners the following: that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners supports House Bill 850 and act to repeal the right of a school board to file legal action challenging the sufficiency of funds appropriated to the capital outlay fund. Number two, that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners further resolves that the members of the North Carolina General Assembly representing Wayne County support House Bill 850. Number three, that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners further resolve that the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners support House Bill 850. Carolina Association of County Commissioners support House Bill 850. And number four, and be it further resolved, that the Wayne County Board of Education takes steps to correct the issues at the low-performing schools so that the students in Wayne County will receive a proper education with the funds supplied by Wayne County, the state of North Carolina, and the federal government. This is seventh day of May 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Need a motion?
No. Motion been made by Commissioner Bell. Any further discussion or comments?
It's brought to my attention that in the whereas says that the concern is $93.2 million. That should be six years and not seven. That should be seven years, not six.
Seven years and not six years.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mayor.
I happen to agree wholeheartedly with Commissioner Bell. I think one of the things that we're facing is that 95% of the citizens in Wayne County that I talked to think that the Board of Education reports to the Board of Commissioners. I've been asked that all the time. That's not the case. I think one of the concerns out there is, in my district, and a lot of citizens have called me, is that, yes, we have to fund the school system, but we have no authority as to how the money is spent. Once it's given, we have no authority. We can make recommendations. One of the things about our underperforming schools is that people say that we're not paying our teachers enough. We need to throw money at it. We need to, we need to get these underperforming schools. That could be part of the problem, but let me say this: In the private sector, and I'm saying this pretty well in the public sector, but in the private sector, money is not the number-one priority. Money is number three. Number-one priority is a good place to work. And number two is that the teachers that I talked to, not just in Wayne County but in Johnston County, my neighbor is a teacher in Johnston County, they feel like that they are out of place to a certain degree because they have no authority in the classroom for discipline. So what I'm saying is, is that money may be part of the issue, but I can tell you that in my experience, and to get in around and talking to teachers, it is not the main issue. So I just like the idea of Commissioner Bell stating that we need to get back to basics. We need to get back to basics. We need to figure out how we can better educate our children, the future leaders of Wayne County, maybe a commissioner sitting up here on this board. We need to get back to basics. Rather than making excuses, we need to get down to the brass tacks and get busy with the people we have. If we've got teachers here in Wayne County that have been with us for many, many years, and we've got a lot of good teachers here in Wayne County, we do, I know a lot of them, but if we have teachers here in Wayne County that have been here a lot of years, they've got to be, they've got to have some dedication to be here that long, or maybe it's the fact that they've been here so many years that maybe somebody's overlooking their performance. I don't know. All I can say is, is that human beings, and in the workplace, in the private sector and the public sector, have to feel like they're being wanted, that they're needed. And I think the teachers in Wayne County across the state and across this nation feel the same way. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
I agree with what you're saying, that money is not always the solution. However, I do say that we have got to be cognizant of the fact, if you are a teacher and you have an opportunity to teach in Wayne County in a low-performing school, a school where 37%, I mean, this, these numbers are just mind-boggling. 37% of the students at low-performing schools are not proficient in math. 44%, we're almost talking about half of the students in low-performing schools are not proficient in reading. Now, those are devastating numbers, any way you want to look at it. But if you're a teacher in Wayne County and you're teaching at a low-performing school, undoubtedly the needs of those students are far greater, far greater, than you would find of students in non-low-performing schools. And you've got an opportunity here to teach, and you mentioned your neighbor teaching over in Johnston County. You can teach in one of these low-performing schools, and talk about effort. You almost have to put in twice the effort in that school as you would if you are teaching, I want to say Johnson County, in a Johnson County school. Now, if you go to Johnson County, not only are you not faced with this dilemma, but you also have got two other things here. You've got better facilities, one, and you get paid more money because the supplements are higher. So even though money is not the solution to it all, I think that this board does need to be cognizant of the fact that we do need to look at our supplements and make sure that we are at least competitive to retain good teachers here, that they don't go over to Johnson County, that they don't go over to Wilson County or to Wake County. So I would just ask that we look at the entire picture. And on that, I'm going to hush. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Page.
I'm not going to disagree, and I'm not going to disagree with the speakers that were up here this morning, and I know I sound like a broken record, and I do recognize the fact that we're not as competitive as we should be. I do recognize the fact that there is a lot of work to be done to facilities. Because there's only one pot of money out there, and we can't have blinders on just in education, there's a lot of work that needs to be done elsewhere. I would, if we hadn't had, again, I'm just a broken record here, had two hurricanes in three years, I'd be up to raising taxes. The timing is wrong. It's just wrong. We cannot overtax our farming community, which brings the largest economic impact to this county, over a billion dollars. Some of them hanging on by their teeth, some of them have already lost it. Two years from now, it may be a different picture, they may have rebounded, tariffs may have gone away and that kind of thing, hopefully. But as far as teachers, I understand that. My wife taught school for 30 years. She taught in Jones County, probably one of the poorest counties in this state. Her kids could read, they did well in math, and yes, she and I both reached in our pocket on many occasions to buy paper, pencils, and parents do that, too. So I'm not against raising taxes to pay for these things, but the timing is just not now. And this commissioner and other commissioners may have a different opinion, but I have promised my farming community I would not do it at this time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bell.
I know we're talking about schools, and usually when we bring it to the subject of schools, people say we're fussing, and you know what I mean, we're demonizing the school administration or whatever. But I don't call it fussing, you know. To begin, my number-one position here, I'm a taxpaying citizen of Wayne County, so I have a right to be concerned if I'm a good person, a good citizen. I have a right to be concerned about what kind of schools, I mean, economic development, have to use the school in order to bring in industry. Right now, they can't brag on the school system here in Wayne County, and that's sort of embarrassing. So, so no, we're not fussing, and I know Joe Dougherty going to like this because we may have a little intense fellowship, but we're not fussing, okay?
Mr. Chairman, as I've said in the past, you know, our kids that are in school now, they're the future of this county and this state and this nation. And the teachers, they've got a challenging position, but, you know, these percentages that we see here before is to 37%, 44%. The teachers has got a challenge. I know when I was in school, I certainly didn't make the honor roll by any means, but I basically knew how to read when I started in school, and then it wasn't pre-school and kindergarten and all back then. And a lot of our students today are prepared to go to school, but a lot of them aren't, and they're at a disadvantage. And the teachers, it's their responsibility or their task or to try to bring those students up to the level that some of the other ones are. And it's a, it's a very challenging job. I mean, I commend all the teachers, and certainly we need to try to do as much or more than we are. But like Mr. Page said, you know, the timing is just not right. I heard last night on the evening news that Wake County is going to increase their tax rate by, I think, something like six and a half cent. But we're not Wake County. We do need to do everything we can to work with the school system and provide what we can, but, you know, in excess of $90 million in the last seven years, I think this board, as Mr. Bell said, as long as he's been on the board, the previous boards have given them everything they had asked for. I really think this board has given them more than what they've asked for. And, you know, we could talk about this and go on and on and on and spat back and forth between us and the school board and all, and that's not our objective. Our objective is to educate the children in Wayne County to the best of our ability. But I just, I'm with Mr. Page now, I just, the timing's not right. We probably need to raise taxes, and, but also, we got to, you know, we asked for a quarter-cent sales tax to fund all of it going to education, and the citizens of Wayne County voted it down. I mean, I, the burden, part of the burden lies on the citizens of Wayne County. I mean, we asked for their help, we didn't get it, and, you know, it'd be very easy to just say, well, we're going to raise tax a quarter of a cent anyhow, but that won't be accomplishing anything. But, you know, I could go on and on, but I'll leave it at that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'd just like to add one other thing. You said that 37% or 44% of the kids could not read at grade level. Did you know, excluding Seymour Johnson, just leave Seymour Johnson out of the picture, 40% of the citizens of Wayne County cannot read above a fourth-grade level? Y'all didn't know that, did you?
And one more thing, Mr. Chairman, if I may. You know, we heard this morning that there's a business, fairly large business right here in Wayne County, in Goldsboro, that would like to expand, and they cannot find employees. And that's a shame. The jobs are out there. We, it's just, I don't know, but the jobs are there to people to just put out the effort to get an education, and, but appear some don't want to. I'm through.
You remember me telling you back some, a couple of years ago, you guys, that we have about 28,000 people in Wayne County that have records and cannot work in the local economy? So that's one of our major problems right there. Commissioner Mayor.
Finally, I think that the citizens of Wayne County are going to have to step up to the plate here. I think it's time for the citizens to, and they do govern our county, no matter what we think, when they step up to the plate. But what I'm hearing is, I'm going back, I'm going to open this can of worms, I'm going back to how the money is spent. I've got questions in my own mind, talking about teacher supplements, Commissioner Dougherty. What about the $185,000, $175,000, I'm sorry, $185,000 that the school board spent in architectural and engineering fees to build the classrooms at Fremont and Northwest Elementary over three years ago? That's how much they paid. When you don't follow through on a project, how long are these surveys and engineering plans good for? Number two, it's already been mentioned, and I've gotten eight phone calls from citizens in my district, and this is public knowledge. Commissioner Bell, I want to follow up with what you're saying. This is public knowledge. I have, I have a copy of the Wayne County Public Schools' attorney's fees to Schwartz and Shaw, the independent law firm out of Raleigh, that they hired, the school board hired, for whatever reason. Some of the citizens in my district want to know why this outside law firm was hired because I have a purchase order here that shows between February, between February and June of 2019, the school board spent to Schwartz and Shaw $175,000. Now, this is public record, okay? Anybody can get this email. The citizens of Wayne County are asking me, why couldn't this total of $360,000, is any other place that we could actually take money and save it and move it over to teacher supplements? That's what they're asking? And they're going to be asking a lot of questions about this very thing. Everybody needs to be accountable. All we have to be, the Board of Education needs to be, all of us need to be. So I'm saying that there has to be citizen input here to straighten this out because this has gone way, way farther than any of us wanted to see. And the way it's headed, Commissioner Bell, it doesn't look good at this point. So the citizens, I think, are going to have to step up and say, look, we are the taxpayer. You need to look at doing this, this, and this, or you will suffer the consequences like I've been told at election time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, couple of...
Uh, Mr. ... Okay. Pardon me. I have been...
And you have all get back.
I have, I just want to share a couple of things before we move to a vote or whatever. I want to read two of the wheres. Whereas more than 37% of students in low-performing schools were not proficient in math based on an end-of-grade test. And the next one is similar. The 44% of the students are not performing based on the end of math test, other than the reading. I want you to be careful as you put a lot of store on the last part of these. It says, "based upon end-of-grade test." And when you're talking about whether children can read or not, it's based on the end-of-grade test. And before we go too far in the weeds... And before we go too far in the weeds, it would benefit this board to hear from the pros in the school buildings as to what is required on the end-of-grade tests in reading and in math. There's a difference in whether someone can read proficiently to carry themselves through life and whether or not they can pass it based upon the end-of-grade test that's put in front of the child. It's two different things. Starting back in the late, middle nineties, there have been tests put in front of students by, prescribed by the General Assembly and/or the Board of Education out of Raleigh that said, this is what you've got to be proficient in to be determined to pass the end-of-grade. Each time that that benchmark is made, the goalpost is moved. I would challenge anyone in this room to go and deal with the end-of-grade test for these grade levels and be sure that you could pass them. And what is needed here is to hear from principals and the schools as to what the challenges are for those end-of-grade tests. You would be shocked to know what is required to be able to pass these end-of-grade tests. And there's a difference between a person being able to read. Someone said, I think someone said, there was, John, I believe, said there was a certain number of people that cannot read at the fourth grade level. I understand that the driver, the license test to be able to drive a car is written at the fifth grade level. No one made a mistake when they put it there because that is a test based upon being able to make it through life driving a car. So there are challenges around the state based upon end-of-grade tests. So when you see that thirty-seven and forty-four percent of students in Wayne County Public Schools that are not passing that test, we have to be careful that we are not judging the outcome of every student based on that end-of-grade test because it's put together. In many instances, with barriers that's going to keep the average child from passing that test, but it doesn't mean that that child cannot proficiently go through life and make a living out there and survive out there. I just want you to consider those things. This morning, you heard from two folk, and yes, there was some brick and mortar mixed in there. But there was also some needs to do what it takes to retain teachers in Wayne County and to retain teachers at the lowest performing schools. Because here's the scenario. Teachers will come in with various abilities to qualify to teaching schools. Everyone is not coming from A and T or N C State with a certificate in place to teach when they arrive in Wayne County. They come with some credits to be able to put on an application to qualify them to begin to become certified teachers. So that process is developing. And so a child is in a classroom with a person who has some credits and some educational ability in a subject matter, but that person has not probably been through teacher education training. Okay? There's going to be a several-month process from a regular teacher institution that prepares teachers to become teachers. And so lateral entry teachers are not coming with the full package. They are brought into the classroom and they are developed, and that takes time. Upon that teacher spending some, several years in a classroom, getting certified and feeling that, you know, going through the process, other opportunities come available for that teacher maybe to move to a school where the challenges is not as great. Sometimes it's within our county, other times it's in another county. But what we've got to do is face the facts that we're going to have to provide some supplements that will keep those teachers in place. That's the first thing we've got to do is try to retain them there. Now, I've heard this morning that, no, we cannot do a property tax increase. I would like for us to use the word restore. Restore. Because over the last five or six years, we have reduced the tax in Wayne County, and that has saved folks money on their tax bill. We may have faced the point where we need to restore some of the tax base that has been reduced. Now, my understanding is that there are some needs at Wayne Community College that has to do with their air-conditioned heating system. To be able to make that environment what it needs to be, it sounds like it's going to take some dollars that we may not have right now, and that's going to call for the consideration of some increases in the taxes. So it's not just the public schools and the teacher supplements we're talking about. It's some other environments that need some attention that may call for some restoration, I'll use that word, of the tax base that we have reduced over the last several years and bring that back into place so that we can do the things we need to do. I just want, this is for consideration. I don't think it's appropriate to not call for a vote on anything this morning. I just think we need to begin to think about the broader picture and what's needed out there. Thank you.
One more call. Anyone? Okay. So the gist of this motion that Mr. Bell's made is to support House Bill eight fifty.
The resolution.
The resolution. House Bill eight fifty. That means we'll be sending this resolution to our legislators and any of your board commissioners and any of your citizens that like to call legislators would ask you to do so. Everyone agree?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor, please, a single five raised your right hand. Any disagree?
No.
Okay, okay, I couldn't see everybody's hand. Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioner Echot.
Yes, sir. We're deeply involved in that, and I've almost forgot what I, again, as the chairman, as the manager stated, I was very proud of the opening of the new EMS station seven on the Hunter Road. Just keep in mind, it's a powerful address and it covers Nahana, powerful Fremont, and that Belfast, the whole area. It's just got to be called something. And with having two stations north in the county now, that's going to be a great asset to northern, the citizens of northern Wayne County. I also would like to, the Wings Over Wayne, I did make it out both days. The crowd Saturday was unreal. I don't even know what kind of figures they've thrown out yet. I mean, I haven't heard, but I've been going, this is the third one that I've been to. And Saturday out there was by far the biggest crowd I had ever seen. I mean, it was elbow to elbow. But I like, again, all of the county staff, there's too many to start mentioning, do I leave somebody out? But anybody that was involved with the county that made that happen, I just wanted to say Mary, wait me just a minute. And there was a lot of other things that I've attended because, you know, this, springtime is a busy time for all of us, you know? We're working on budgets and there's two or three events every weekend, Saturdays and Sundays, and, you know, we've all been busy. But there's just too many things to try to say, you know, what we've been to. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Dougherty.
I've said enough today. No comment.
Commissioner Marty.
One additional thing, and I want to thank the sheriff for being here because this is a question, and once again, it has, we've been watching probably a little bit too much I know that we invested in new body cameras, and I was sort of, I would like to hear that they are being used on a one-hundred percent basis, and this is the reason. It seems like in other counties, in North Carolina and in other states, each time there's a situation, the cameras have, whatever, not been turned on. You'll hear that, well, we can let you see one percent, a one-minute of a nine-minute video or recording. And that, of course, has brought to my attention that I know we've invested in these things, and I just want to hear that they're being used at a hundred percent or what percent are they being used?
We have implemented the new body cams that were purchased in January, I believe is when we actually got those implemented. The car cameras, I believe, are mostly implemented at this point because it takes some install. We had to take the old ones out and install the new ones. But as of two weeks ago, we were, I think, about ninety percent of having the car cameras installed. So as far as the implementation, they have all been implemented now. The activation, our policy is when you are interacting with a person, you do activate it. The problem sometime is when you jump out of that car in the heat of a moment, you may or may not activate it. Now, if they're in view of the car camera during a traffic stop, then it's automatic. When you activate those blue lights, it's activated. But the camera on the person has to be manually activated to get it started. But when they're interacting with an individual such as a suspect or interviewing a person of a potential suspect, it is our policy to activate it. But like I say, sometimes, I can't say what humans will do in any particular situation. I do know that in the heat of a moment, if you're jumping out to assist an officer that's down or you just got through a car chase, you may forget to activate that body cam, but the car camera is activated. And if I'm not mistaken, if your, any car is activated, when you leave the car, I think it synchronizes with your body cam. I think I'm saying that correctly. So we've taken all precautions that we feel like we can to make sure that they do activate and do what they're supposed to do. But I will say there always could be a human fallacy involved in the heat of a moment.
And sure, that is what seems to be the prevailing position whenever there's this opportunity for something and not to be completely, because human nature is human nature. But, you know, they always say, we practice the way we play or we play the way we practice. And I would, I just don't want us to be put in a position of coming up with these answers that seem like come from Durham and some of these other places in North Carolina and out of state where we can't verify and validate. Since it is electronically monitored, I just wonder if you did, they say what gets monitored gets done. Just to look back on your shirt, on your debits and on the cameras that they have and just see what percent of time are they able to remember to turn off. Therefore, it leads to them having some good, strong counseling as to the need to, and I know in any given situation, you just can't turn it on. But we, I would just want us to do the most monitoring we could in using the electronic opportunities we may have to look at how much these cameras are being used currently. Therefore, maybe identifying young men that might not do it on the basis that you would expect.
We do monitor our reports, and whenever it does say on our reports, they're supposed to document BWC body worn camera activated, and we do monitor that. I just want to say sometimes when we say a hundred percent, there could be a human fallacy there.
I understand. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Maye.
I just have a couple. Of course, we had our DSS meeting, but you saw the result of that today. Yeah, I'm glad we opened the new EMS station on the Hunter Road. I'm finally down from seventeen-minute ETA to eight where I live. So that's been, that's been an ongoing thing since I've been a commissioner. But that's, that was a good thing. Also, we attended the National Day of Prayer at Faith Church, the luncheon, which they have every year. Great program. Young people, the young people really put on a wonderful program. Real quickly, I think the pastor in his few minutes had hit the nail on the head. I'm going back to three, four, five weeks ago where in Nigeria, a hundred and twenty Christians were massacred, attacked and killed. This is going on across the world, that Christians in particular are being attacked. It's only, it's going on in the United States. As a matter of fact, it's going on in the state of North Carolina, and it goes on to a certain degree in Wayne County. But I will say this, Christians across the nation, and I do profess to be a Christian, is that we know, we know for a fact where the answers are to all of our problems we've been discussing, such as the schools and all these other issues. But the key is, is that we have a right as a Christian to believe, just like any other faith does, whether it's Catholic, Muslim, or whatever. But no, you don't see those other so-called religions or Christian organizations being attacked. Having said that, I think the next couple of years, you're going to see the Christians in America, the Christians in North Carolina, the Christians in Wayne County are going to get more involved in the political process to let our, to let our morals be known and to be a part of the process. And that's a good thing because everything that you see at Faith Academy, as far as our young people and the way they teach and what they teach, they have, is a whole different, it's a whole different setup. That same setup will work, and it has worked, in our public school system way back fifty years ago. So we need to get back to basics, this sort of thing. The other thing is, is that I, as a commissioner, and I know that we are doing some things, and I'm, Mr. Parker, you're going to hate me for this, but I'm going to say it anyway. I'm tired of being, of being put down and tramped on as a Christian in Wayne County or the state, and I'm going to tell you why. I, as an elected official, I know that we're trying to do everything according to what's politically correct as far as prayer, our invocation, and things like that. But I, as an elected official, my understanding is, is that if we get other clergy members from outside, if you get clergy to come every commissary from outside, they can say exactly what they want as far as their faith. They can, they can say, whether you're Muslim, whatever, you can say what you want. But I, as an elected official, or any of us sitting on this board, cannot. And in a Christian's case, if we are not able, we can say God. Christian's case, if we are not able, we can say God, we can use God in our invocation. But since we are Christians and we believe in Jesus Christ, and we believe that, you know, all three are the same, here's the key. I, as an elected official, if a citizen can come up here and give an invocation, and they can say Jesus, and they can, just like we had today, why can't, why can't elected officials do it? Because I'm a taxpayer also. I'm a taxpayer also. So if we got seven different commissioners up here with seven different religions, they should be able to speak and pray to their God just like anybody else does. So I am, if I have the opportunity to pray, sitting from this seat or from any place else, I'm going to pray as a Christian would pray. And that's all I have to say, but it's going to be a lot more coming up. Christians are beginning to wake up and saying, hey, we've had enough of this. It's time for us all to come together and go back. We need a revival in this country, and most Christians believe this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to mention just a couple of things. Mr. Honeycutt, if you'll get back with Ms. Barnes as soon as we can, I thought we had that issue resolved. Maybe we just didn't communicate it.
I don't think we communicated.
Okay, but we'll get that. And if Chip and Barry can get on that, Mr. Petty's request or question, I was kind of unaware of that today as well. So that... I too attended with some others the National Day of Prayer Luncheon at Faith Free Will Baptist Church, and it was a big turnout, huge success, good presentation, good message. And you did a good job out there. And a special thanks to Pastor Christian Powell and Faith Free Will Baptist for hosting that event. It was good. And probably the most important thing I'm going to say today is today's my mom's birthday. She's 86 years young, and she still has that special look in her eyes and facial expression. When she gives it to me, I pay attention. I know what she means. But anyway, with that, um, yes.
One quick thing. Me and Commissioner Comardi attended the National Night of Prayer at DeWai that night, and had speakers from, and Mr. Honeycutt was also there. Had different speakers from the business sector, the education sector, military, and education. Dr. Walker was the one for the, on the education side. And it was just as good as the thing at Faith Church, and had a, had a pretty good turnout. And so, you know, that kind of goes in line with what Mr. Mayor was talking about, but me and Mr. Comardi had a conversation, and that was, and any of that was some dynamic speakers there. Thank you.
Moving back into session. With the same purpose.